All right, we're all set to begin.
Thank you. All right, I'll follow up a zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, March 27, 2024, and all persons interested in or affected by the access of the zoning board of appeals here by notify pursuant to section 11 of chapter 48 of the law of town of Massachusetts. And all amendments there, too, that are public hearing and the following appeals will be held on Wednesday, March 27, 2024, at times indicated. The zoning board of appeals hearing is going to be held by our own participation method. Public access. This meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be held by live via channel, Xfinity Channel 8 or High Definition Channel 1072. It may also be accessed via the government access channel livestream on the Town of Barnstable website, Watch, question mark, panel, number one, real time access.
Do you happen to have a different mic? Your audio is like really low. Or make sure your audio, like you're using the AirPods audio?
Okay, man.
Is that better than saying?
Yeah.
Uh, much better.
Okay. Um, real time access zoning board of appeals meeting is available by utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided. Public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals by utilizing this Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID. Zoom link is or calling 888-475-4499 and entering the meeting ID 810-4041-4648. Applicants represented as individuals required to have the peer performance zoning board of appeals may participate through accessing the link or telephone number provided. Except that they may be displayed for a mode of public access. Copies of the applications are available for review by calling 508-862-4682 or emailing anna@brigham@town.barnstable.us. All right, so I will start off by calling the order with introduction of board members. Herb Bohnsie.
I'm present.
Uh, Paul Pennard.
Hello, I'm here.
Mark Hanson.
I am present.
Aaron Webb is absent. Denise Johnson.
Present.
Larry Hurwitz.
Present.
Manny House.
Present.
Vote. Um, all right. Notice the recording of this meeting is, those zoning board of appeals will be recorded and broadcast on the Town of Barnstable Government Access Channel in accordance with MGL Chapter 38, Section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is supporting this meeting and if so, please make their presence known. All right, seeing none. Uh, we'll move on to, we have minutes, um, this week from January 24, 2024 and February 7, 2024. Does anyone have any comments or want to move them for approval?
Motion to approve.
Saxton.
All right, roll call vote. Herb Bohnsie.
In favor. I'm in favor.
Denise Johnson.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny House.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Paul, on that chance, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Are you in favor?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I wasn't here for the first meeting of the minutes, but I was here for the second. So, I approve the second.
Okay. All right, um, and yes, I'm also in favor. So that moves the minutes. Uh, going to Old Business Appeal Number 2023-042, Patricia Baker and David D. Moore. As applicants are appealing issuance of building permit BLDR 23-780 issued on November 1st, 2023 to EJ Jackson for the construction of a 3,100 square foot three bedroom home for Janet Holian, trustee of the Holian Family Realty Trust. The subject property is located at 240 Wind Subway, Osterfield, Massachusetts and 250 Wind Subway, Osterfield, Massachusetts, as shown on assessor's map 051, as parcel 012-001 and 012-000, respectively. It is located in the residence F1 RF1 and Resource Protection Overlay District, our POD. Uh, this was continued from January 24, 2024 and February 28, 2024. Um, no members were assigned. Um, so we'll assign our regular members. Two, three. Uh, myself, Herb, Paul, Mark, and Denise, are you good to sit on this?
Sure.
And Denise.
Okay.
Uh. And do we, and is Commissioner Florence coming tonight or no?
I, um, I believe that Jeff Carter is, um, supposed to be here tonight.
Okay.
So, um, so Mr. Chairman, this is, Mr. Chairman, Mike Ford, I represent the property owner of, could I, as a point of order, just update the board as to where this stands?
Go ahead, Attorney Ford.
The, uh, building commissioner, uh, on Monday of this week, um, issued a notice of suspension of this building permit. He did so at my request because I advised him that, uh, the A&R plan upon which the building permit was based, um, does not show a lot that meets the shape factor uh, because of a wet one's line that, uh, was used that was not on the original A&R plan. And so I requested that he suspend the building permit to allow the property owner to go back to the planning board with a new A&R plan. He took that action and suspended the building permit. So there really is nothing before you tonight for which you can proceed with the hearing. I've discussed that with the counsel for the, uh, appellant's, who I believe is also on the Zoom. And our joint recommendation to the board, given the procedural posture of this case, is that, uh, we're going to jointly request that it be continued for 60 days to allow that planning board action, uh, whatever it may be, to take place and, and then return to your board at that time, the theory being that the suspension may have been lifted by that time or it may not have and, and some other disposition will be taken, uh, of the appeal. But that's the status. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
That would mean to make a continuance to our late, um, May's hearing?
Yeah, I think, I think we need at least 60 days, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Does anyone from the board have any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Attorney Timmons.
Thank you. Um, Benjamin Timmons, so as Attorney Ford mentioned, um, I'm here on behalf of the co-petitioners, Ms. Baker and Mr. Moyer, and I just wanted to, you know, say for the record that I concur with, with Mr. Ford's, uh, Attorney Ford's description of what has occurred. Our appeal cited three grounds in support of, of our desire that the building permit be revoked. One of those three grounds is the lot shape factor issue that Attorney Ford just referenced. Um, and if this were to proceed, we, you know, would be pursuing the other grounds and possibly a lot shape factor depending on what happens. Um, but I agree that six, a 60 day continuance, um, if the board is so inclined, would be prudent and then it may be, it may be necessary to further continue it, um, if the building permit remains suspended in 60 days.
Okay. Um, is there anyone from the board that has any questions or thoughts or opinions on this? Seeing none. Uh, Anna, what would that, what would that put, put the meeting, I know we go out to May 8th, what's the meeting after that?
That would be May 22nd.
Is that enough time, Attorney Ford and Attorney Timmons?
Uh, the ball's kind of in my court, Mr. Chairman, as the representative of the property owner to get back to the planning board. Um, we're hopeful that it will be, but as Attorney Timmons said, uh, it may be necessary to ask the board for additional time if we don't have a resolution by that time, but we will keep the board advised through, uh, Anna Brigham.
Okay. So I will make a motion to continue, um, appeal number 2023-042 to May 22nd, 2024. Have a second?
I'll stick with that.
All right, so roll call vote on the continuation. Herb Bohnsie.
In favor.
All right.
Uh, I'm in favor.
I'm in favor. I can't hear.
Jake, we lost you.
Oh. Hear me now?
Barely.
Denise Johnson?
In favor.
I am also in favor. So that continues, uh, that item to May 22nd, uh, sorry, yeah, May 22nd, 2024. Uh, moving on to, I'll go back to Old Business, uh, appeal number 2023-044. George and Deborah Allegro have petitioned for a variance pursuant to section 240-13E RF1 Bulk Regulations Minimum Side Yard Setbacks. Petitioners seek a variance to construct an unconditioned screen porch over an existing patio 12.6 feet from the lot line where 15 feet is required. The subject property is located at 202 Seaview Avenue, Osterfield, Massachusetts, as shown on assessor's map 138 as parcel 014. It is located in RF zoning district. This is continued from January 10, 2024, January 24, 2024, February 7, 2024, February 28, 2024, and March 13, 2024. Um, no members were assigned. I believe, um, we're going to go forward with this tonight. So again, I will assign our regular members, myself, Herb Bohnsie, Paul Pennard, Mark Hanson, and Larry, are you okay to sit on this?
Yes.
All right. Um, Attorney Schultz, do you want me to read the special permit in? And you discuss them consecutively or you want to handle the variance first?
Um, we can handle the variance first.
Okay, so I will pass it over to you.
Uh, good evening, Chair Dewey and members of the board. For the record, Attorney Michael Schultz on behalf of the applicants, George and Deborah Allegro. The Allegros are the owners of 202 Seaview Avenue in Osterfield, Massachusetts and are seeking a variance to allow the construction of a screened porch over an existing raised patio that would be 12.6 feet from the property line where 15 feet is required. The, uh, 202 Seaview Avenue is shown on assessor's map 138 as parcel 034 and is comprised of approximately 24,160 square feet. It is situated in an RF1 zoning district, Aquifer Protection District and Resource Protection Overlay District. The property is presently approved under the terms and the conditions of special permit 2016-018. I did append that to, um, my letter to the board dated March 12th of 2014. I would submit that the dwelling is consistent, uh, with the rest of the neighborhood in terms of size and setback on the lot. As shown on the site plan prepared by Sullivan Engineering and elevations prepared by Northside Design, the applicants are proposing a non-conditioned screen porch over the patio. Um, the reason for this request is that the southerly facing patio is exposed to direct sunlight the entire day.
That's Donald was doing this tonight.
No, it's me. And, um, would provide the requisite shade. The, let's see, so with the, under the, under the variance, um, three elements are required. Uh, first, that owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape, topography of such land or structures and especially affecting such land or structures, but not generally, uh, affecting the zoning district in which it is located generally, I would respectfully submit, uh, that the board could find that this is a topography issue, uh, which affects the land, um, in the structures, but doesn't affect the, uh, zoning district in general. Um, the raised nature of the patio as it sits on the land and appended to the structure, uh, creates that topography issue. I did append some photographs that are helpful to my letter. I don't know if the board had a chance to review them. They're appended as exhibit five and there are two of them. It does depict, um, how that patio is situated in relation to the house and to the land. Secondly, literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would involve substantial hardship, um, either financial or otherwise to the applicants. And I would respectfully submit to the board that, um, having to remove and regrade and to reconstruct, uh, would involve a significant, uh, financial expenditure uh, to the Allegros where all that we're doing is really providing, um, a covered roof, uh, and to provide shade. And third, that the desirable relief could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating, uh, from the intent or the purpose of the zoning ordinance. And I would respectfully, uh, submit to the board, uh, that the existing raised bluestone patio, it wouldn't be a detriment to, uh, the neighborhood as well as that screened porch. The Allegros did reach out to the Knightleys who are the direct abutters and, uh, they did not oppose it. Um, they have not written a letter in support. Um, I did talk to the, uh, to the Knightleys and it's just a time in their life. They're so busy, uh, they didn't have a chance to write, um, a letter to the board. Um, with that, I would respectfully, uh, turn it over to the board if you had any questions at all on the application for the variance. Thank you.
From the board, have any questions for?
Uh, I just have one, a quick question. So Attorney Schultz, if this was a deck and it were attached to the house, would this, would you need to be coming forward for this?
Um, I, I still would be.
You'd need to be in the variance.
Forward. It's, it's the encroachment into a fifteen side yard.
So, I'm sorry, Mark, are you, is that?
I'm done. Thank you.
A, a question, um, in terms of the hardship, uh, why would they have to tear the patio down if they didn't get the screen porch?
Well, in, in order to construct a, the screen porch, this dimensionally, it is set, they were, they wouldn't go any further than what's presently existing. Um, but in order to, to make something screened, it wouldn't look proper according to the elevations and to the size of the house.
Okay.
Questions?
Well, I, I have one. Did, did you say that the bluestone patio is existing?
It is existing, yes.
And they're gonna, like, uh, roof over it? That's the plan?
Simply put a roof over it and screened and it would be unconditioned.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? Herb, any questions?
Actually, no.
Um, so we could go to public comment. I will open public comment. Uh, I don't believe we received any correspondence that I see in Laser Beach. Anna, was there anything else that came in?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this item? Anyone? David, did anyone come in that you know of? It looks like there's 18 people. Is there anyone that came in that wanted to speak to this that you know of?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. All right, if no one's going to speak to it, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Roll call vote on closing public comment. Herb Bohnsie.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So that closes public comment. It brings it back to the board for deliberation. Um, they don't have any thoughts or want to make findings?
Just a quick observation on the exhibits submitted that show the actual, um, that show the actual photographs, exhibit 17 and, oh, sorry, 18 and 19. Um, it is a pretty significant structure. I don't know how you would, I don't think there would be any way to, as Attorney Schultz showed, that you, there's no way to make this patio smaller really without destroying it. Um, I don't know if anybody else shares the same view, but I think it does speak to the potential hardship part anyway. Um, and we're to, what are we talking, two and a half feet?
That's correct. Uh, two and a half feet into a 15 foot side yard, so not a 10 foot side yard.
And it's not clear. I'm looking at the site plan and I see the fence section of it on the other side of the fence. Is that, is that screened or is that just a fence? It, I don't see any pictures that really would indicate what that is.
It's a fence, it's a fence and it is screened.
It's screened with, okay. Thank you.
All right, I, you know, I think hardship, uh, variances are challenging, um, but I think we have, you know, I think we can maybe lean on the structure here a, a little bit. Um, and the structure is pretty centered on the lot and there's not a lot of other options here. Um, but it is variant findings. We need to make sure that, that we pass the three-pronged test. So if anyone has any sort of thoughts or opinions on that, I would welcome them.
I think number one is certain, certainly structure. As you point out, there's nothing there. Literal enforcement of the provisions, I think we're speaking that that would require, um, a significant change in the, and, and, I mean, I don't know if there's a, uh, financial hardship necessarily, but there, I don't think there's any way to deconstruct this, this particular patio without significant expense. Um, obviously I don't think there's any, you know, we've heard that, um, it, it does fall within what the rest of the, the properties look like. It doesn't look like there's any particular, um, determination by the neighbors that that would be a problem. It sounds like they're, they, they would have approved, you know, this going in anyway. Um.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with, uh, excuse me, Jake.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I agree with Mark. Um, uh, the initial patio was proved encroaching into the setbacks and so I think the addition of a porch doesn't really, um, add anything to that setback or detract anything from the setback. And so I think it's just, I mean, they could have asked for the patio and the porch together. They didn't. They've done it separately and so I, I don't, uh, have a problem personally.
Mark or Paul, do you want to make findings?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make findings if you, if you wish.
That'd be great.
Okay, uh, this is appeal number 2023-044. Uh, Ali, Aliagro, I hope that's pronounced correctly. They've, they've, uh, asked for variance, um, to, to construct an unconditioned screen porch over an existing patio. Um, only to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures, especially affecting such land or structures, but not generally affecting zoning. Um, there's no, um, issue with respect to, uh, soil conditions, shape, um, certainly for the shape in terms of being able to kick, to not deconstruct, um, but rather to construct something on it would be fine. Um, I don't think, uh, with respect to the enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance, um, you know, financial or otherwise, and I think we're both into financial and otherwise, I think we, we certainly, um, don't want to, uh, they, they don't want to incur the expense of deconstructing and, um, and so therefore that would certainly be extensive if we, um, if we require that. And I don't think there's any detriment to public good, um, because, uh, we haven't heard from the, uh, from the budding neighbors, um, although we have heard secondhand through their lawyer, through the lawyer, uh, the petitioners. Um, but, um, it, since the patio also extends out there, the addition of just screens certainly wouldn't, um, wouldn't do anything to nullify or substantially derogate, um, with respect to the zoning ordinance. And those are my findings with conditions.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, so Paul's made a motion to approve the variance, um, with the following findings. Do I have a, uh, second?
Second.
Uh, Mark, second. Uh, roll call vote on approving, um, with the following findings. Herb Bohnsie.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
I'm in favor, too.
And I am also in favor. Um, so Paul, did you have conditions?
I do. I have conditions one through five as stipulated by the staff report dated, uh, March 27th, um, as, uh, as stipulated here. And I would ask, uh, the attorney, uh, do they have any issue with that?
Anna, was it March or, I have January 11th?
It's January 11th.
Okay, January 11th. Just to stand corrected. Uh, Attorney Schultz?
Uh, I've reviewed those and we have no issue with those. Thank you.
Okay, then those are the conditions that I propose.
All right, so roll call vote in approving the variance with the conditions as proposed. Herb Bohnsie.
Uh, I'm in favor.
Uh, Paul Pennard.
You in favor?
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
I'm in favor.
And I am also in favor. Uh, so that, um, grant you the variance and so now we can move on to the special permit. Um, an appeal number 2023-045, George and Deborah Allegro have applied for modified special permit number 2016-018, modification number three, to allow for the construction of a screen porch over an existing patio which would increase the lot coverage from 16.2% to 18.3%. The subject property is located at 202 Seaview Ave, Osterfield, Massachusetts, as shown on assessor's map 138 as parcel 014. It's located in the RF1 zoning district. This is continued from January 10, 2024, January 24, 2024, February 7, 2024, February 28, 2024, and March 13, 2024. Um, and I will assign the same members as the variance, Herb Bohnsie, Paul Pennard, Mark Hanson, Larry Hurwitz, and myself. Um, Attorney Schultz, for the special permit?
Uh, yes, Chair Dewey, members of the board. Again, for the record, Attorney Michael Schultz. Um, under the special permit, um, we are looking to add the screen porch. Condition number three, um, of that special permit did require that, or did state that it was full buildout of the lot at that time in 2016 and that any, uh, future relief would need to come before the board. The, um, the addition of the structure over the porch would be considered lot coverage. Um, it would not count towards the gross floor area, uh, due to it being unconditioned space, neither heated nor cooled. Um, we would be going from 16.2, I believe, to 18.3% of lot coverage, which would still remain under the 20% lot coverage required under the ordinance. Um, the application, um, I would submit would fall within the category specifically accepted in the ordinance for the grant of the special permit, uh, which is that special permit 2016-018, which does require, um, approval by this board for any expansion. Um, and secondarily, that the proposed alteration or expansion is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwelling. And I would submit that the plans in the elevation said, prepared by Sullivan in Northside Design, uh, simply show an increase from 16.2% lot coverage to, uh, 18.3 and remains within the threshold of under 20. And then, again, uh, the Allegros did speak with the Knightleys who are the direct abutters, uh, who did not oppose it. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Schultz. Um, any board members have any questions for the applicant? Uh, seeing none, I will open the public comment. Is there anyone from the public here to speak to this? Again, seeing, hearing none. I'll give it another second. I will make a motion to close public comment on appeal number 2023-045. I will make a motion to close public comment on appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero four five. Do I have a second?
Yeah, also in the poll.
All right, roll call vote, this is on closing public comment, her vote and seek.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
I'm in favor.
And I am also in favor. Um, so that brings it back to the board for, um, deliberation. I think it's pretty straightforward. You know, this is a requirement on the previous special permit. So we're, you know, sort of checking that box, like the variance is the heavier lift here. Anyone else have any thoughts or questions?
None further.
Does someone want to make findings?
Larry.
As you know, I'm new to this. But I believe this, uh, special permit number twenty twenty-three dash forty-five, which is a modification of special permit number twenty sixteen dash one eight, meets the requirements of the zoning board. Uh, in particular, since we just, we approved the one above it. This is the permit that, uh, they must come back from the original variance to ask us if they can do this. I find that, uh, there's no issues, uh, with this variance, this request.
I think just, uh, let's see, yeah. Larry, will you just read on the proposed special permit findings, one through four?
Yep, I'm looking for that right now. I'm looking for that right now. Okay. So on my findings, uh, whether or not the application falls within the category specifically accepted by this chapter, I find that it does. An evaluation of all the evidence presented at the public hearing by the petitioner and interested parties as it relates to fulfillment of the spirit and intent of this chapter without substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood is affected. And I find that it is, uh, particularly since the, uh, abutters, uh, have not objected to it. Uh, the site plan has been reviewed and has found approval in accordance with Article nine herein subject only to the issuance of the special permit. The proposed alteration and expansion are not substantially more detrimental to the environment or the neighborhood, in my opinion, community or star character neighborhood than the existing building or structure is. And that is conditions one through four.
All right, so Larry has, uh, made a, a proposal to approve this, a motion to approve this, um, based on the findings presented, do I have a second?
Second.
And roll call vote on approval of the special permit, her vote and seek.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard.
I'm in favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
I'm in favor.
And I am also in favor. Uh, so Larry, did you have any, uh, special conditions to go or go with that? I think there were just one on the staff report.
Yeah, I, I don't find anything, uh, special, uh, to go along with this.
Yeah, it just, what was suggested was, um, that the total lot coverage on all structures shall not exceed the eighteen point three. The floor should not exceed twenty-nine point nine. And all conditions would remain in full effect.
That's correct, yep.
Uh, so roll call vote on the findings with the, um, condition on twenty twenty-three dash zero four five. Her vote and seek.
Favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
I'm in favor.
And I am also in favor. Um, so Attorney Schultz, um, we got this one off our agenda after a few months.
That, that was quite a string of reading in the continuance date, so I thank you all for patience. And, uh, again, thank you, have a nice night.
Thank you. All right, moving on to new business, um, appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero six five one eight dash five five six, Yarmouth Road LLC has filed an appeal of administrative official's decision in accordance with two forty dash one twenty-five B one A and MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section eight. The appellant seeks to overturn the notice of violation in order to cease this and abate from the building commissioner dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. The violation determined by the building commissioner is of the Barnstable zoning ordinance, Chapter two forty, Section sixty-one C, prohibited sign. Specifically, the recent building construction includes a functioning lighting provision serving an outline portions of the building. The subject property is located at five five six Yarmouth Road, Hyannis, Mass. As shown on Assessor's Map three four four as parcel zero seven six dash zero zero one. It's located in the business B zoning district. Um, so sitting on this will be our regular members, myself, her vote and seek, Paul Pennard, Mark Hanson. And Manny, are you going to sit on this one?
Yep.
All right, so Manny else. Um, Attorney Jeff Ward, I believe, is handling this whenever.
Actually, Jeff's on the next one, I'm going to handle this one, Mike Ford, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So, Attorney Mike Ford for the record, Attorney Mike Ford for the record. Uh, together with, uh, Jeff Ward is also on. Uh, Mr. Laham is also on, I believe. Mr. Laham is the, uh, manager of the applicant, which is five eighteen, five fifty-six Yarmouth Road LLC, uh, the owner of the property. I'm sure all people, all you, uh, board members are familiar, this is the new Jeep location, uh, on Yarmouth Road. Just some background, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Sometime, um, uh, during the Christmas holidays, uh, these last Christmas holidays, I received a phone call from Commissioner Florence, who indicated to me that, um, he felt, uh, that the lighting at the new Jeep location, um, was in violation of the ordinance. Described to me what it was, and, um, I got ahold of Mr. Laham. And, uh, Mr. Laham, as he usually does, um, attempted to resolve the problem because his history is to work with the town. Asked us to, uh, contact the building commissioner's office and see if we couldn't figure out what the nature of the violation was, because it was kind of vague at that point. So we asked for a meeting on the site. Uh, and Deputy Commissioner Carter, uh, came to that meeting. And, uh, at that time, um, the lighting in question, which, um, I'll speak to in some detail later, uh, was all on the plans that were submitted for the building permit uh, for this new building. Uh, all of this recessed, uh, LED lighting was, was shown. Uh, the lighting systems were shown on the plans, uh, that were approved for the building permit. Mr. Carter came out, viewed it, and, um, uh, our comments to Mr. Carter was, how is this a sign? And, um, he said, well, it's, uh, prohibited under Section sixty-one, uh, that's two forty sixty-one C, because it appears to be a display of lighting by strings or tubes of lights in this case, uh, which outline portions of the building. I said, uh, uh, you know, we appreciated that, but, um, in order for sixty-one C, uh, to kick in, it has to be a sign. Because, uh, prior to sixty-one, you'll read that, um, sixty-one C applies only to signs. So you've got to be assigned before you are prohibited under sixty-one C. So in order to be assigned, uh, and a sign is, is defined as any permanent or temporary structure, light, letter, word, model, banner, pennant, so forth, those don't necessarily apply here, or any other device, which is used for one of these three purposes. So we know light is in there and we're dealing with light, so, uh, I guess they, they can check that box. But it has to either advertise, inform or attract the attention of the public in which it's designed to be seen from outside the building. Well, clearly this is designed to be outside the building. We indicated that it wasn't there to advertise anything, it wasn't there to inform. So it must be the position of the building department that it was there to attract the attention of the public. So we indicated that, um, there might be something that we could do with respect to the illumination. By that I mean, um, dim the illumination. And so, um, we told Mr. Carter that, um, he, he asked us for a letter outlining our position, which we sent him, which was dated, uh, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I put that in the packet for the appeal. And during that time, the lighting in question is really, uh, two um, companion strips of LED lights that, uh, run together. Mr. Laham had, um, half of those, one strip of the lights turned off. And, um, we showed him that and he, Mr. Carter observed that, well, well, that wasn't as bright as before. And I said, well, if you're finding that it's attracting the public's attention, um, what would be the level of lighting? And so, um, he wasn't sure, he wanted to discuss it with, uh, Commissioner Florence. He did, and he advised us that Commissioner Florence's position was that, um, dimming it was not going to cure the problem. He thought it was a violation of, of sixty-one C and, um, subsequently issued a notice of violation, which is what's on appeal before you this evening. Um, and that stated January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, which is the order, um, that we appealed from and is before you tonight under Chapter forty-eight, section seven, eight and fifteen. Since that time, uh, Mr. Laham had a dimmer installed and, um, uh, the dimmer, uh, can take, uh, the one strip of lights that are remaining, um, down even lower. In fact, we've taken it down fifty percent, which is really fifty percent of what was, uh, fifty percent of the lights to start with, so twenty-five percent from the picture that you see that was the violation that, uh, was an attraction. But the position of the building department, I believe, is, and I won't speak for Mr. Carter, I'm more than capable of speaking for himself. It was our thought that if it was dimmed enough, uh, that would resolve it. It did not, and so we find ourselves here. So the first argument I'd like to make is that, um, all of this lighting, uh, was shown on the plans, which I attached to the appeal. Uh, it was described in, in detail on the building permit plans, because it was an expensive lighting system to put in. And it was described, uh, in many sections of the permits, plans as recessed LED, uh, strip fixtures um, in each area that it was proposed. And so it seems to me in the first instance, an argument can be made that it was not deemed to be a sign at that point and the lighting was approved, as was the rest of the lighting on the, on the property, uh, through the building permit and site plan, um, process. I can't say, I'll, I'll be the first one to admit, however, there was no discussion of this at cycling. And I, I don't want to suggest that there was. Uh, but I am suggesting that the lighting, uh, was shown, um, on the building permit plans. Second, I'd ask to consider, um, as to whether or not this is really a sign. It seems to me that, um, in the rush to find that this was a violation, the building department went straight to, um, two forty sixty-one C, which is entitled prohibited signs, in which says any displayed lighting by strings or tubes of lights, including lights which outline any part of a building or which are affixed to any ornamental portion thereof. Um, those are prohibited, except holiday lights, and we're not suggesting these are holiday lights and entitled to that exemption. But in, in order for sixty-one C to, um, have application here, they first have to determine that it's a sign. And that's where we would respectfully suggest that it does not meet the definition of a sign. And, um, uh, we'd ask the board to take a look at that. Uh, the question of whether it attracts the public attention, frankly, any light could attract the public's attention. And lights that were approved as part of the building permit and for which an applicant has made good faith efforts, uh, to lower the illumination of those, uh, seems to me that it takes it out of, uh, the definition of a sign. And if you get out of the definition of a sign, uh, sixty-one C simply doesn't have any application. So, um, that's our argument in the, in the first instance. I would, if I could, uh, like to have the board see a couple of, uh, pictures I sent, Mr. Chairman, to Anna earlier today. Um, I don't know, Anna, if you can put those up on the screen.
Yes, if you could just give me one second.
Give you as much time as you need.
Are you able to see that?
I can't yet. Looks like it's coming up now.
Okay, great. My computer's a little bit slow.
And so, um, this is the front of the building that has been found to be in violation. And then the lighting that's in violation surrounds the two windows and also is, uh, is on the side of, um, the Jeep sign up above and on the sign, uh, on the sides of the entranceway. And, um, I think you have one more, uh, Anna, and I think we sent you two.
There are four photos. Yep. Is this one adequate or would you like me to go forward?
Uh, you keep going forward because I believe some of them are at diminished illumination. That's a picture with it on during the day.
I think there's only two images there, there's a, there's an initial and the, and the second one that she showed.
Yeah, and then, and this is the fourth one. Uh, also, uh, an image, um, during the day. So, um, we, we brought you these because the sign that is, um, or the picture that I know the building department, um, placed in the file, I'd suggest to you, uh, is much brighter than this picture that represents, um, Mr. Laham going to the extent that he did, which was to uh, disconnect half of the lights and then put a dimmer on, so, um, that's half as bright, um, which is really twenty-five percent of what the original illumination was. So I think when you go by this building with, with it like this, what attracts the eye is the lights in the building. The Jeep sign and Kate caught. I, I, I don't, it, it seems to me a bit of a stretch to suggest that that the outlining around the two windows and the entrance is in itself a sign and therefore subject to, uh, the sixty-one C prohibition. But that's the question, and, um, we brought that to this board um, to get direction on that. Uh, because the, this, uh, outlining, uh, brand new building, this built-in LED wiring was, was done at some great expense, and as I say, was on the plans uh, that, that were approved. Now, I know you have a letter from, um, the, uh, sign enforcement person for the town. Like, just find it here, Mr. Chairman, give me a moment. I think it was sent by, um, Robin. Let's see, yes, I have it here. Uh, Robin Anderson, um, co-compliance manager. And Robin suggests, uh, and we disagree respectfully, but she suggests that, that the fact that it was in the original building permit, um, doesn't really mean anything because sign applications are made separately. Well, I agree with her that sign applications are made separately and they are reviewed outside the, uh, building permit. And, um, this was not submitted in that process because we don't believe it's a sign. But we just believe it's part of the lighting, um, on the building. And so that's why we would take issue with what Robin is coming up with. I think uh, from our viewpoint, if the town wants to ban lighting, outlined lighting such as this, then they need to decide it specifically in the ordinance. There's none that prohibits the town from adopting a lighting ordinance and saying you can't have There's none that prohibits the town from adopting a lighting ordinance and saying, you can't have this type of lighting. But to suggest that somehow it's a sign and therefore it's under sixty-one C, seems to me that doesn't work. I think that if the obligation is on the town to clearly state in an ordinance, and they could have a lighting ordinance, there's nothing to prohibit it. And she was saying that this is something that every dealership would do, and if you've ridden around Hyannis, you'll know that the lighting, the type of lighting we're talking about appears to be all over the place. And we have a whole series of pictures, but we're not here to suggest that, hey, somebody else is doing it. It's us that were cited and we're here to defend that. But I respectfully suggest that the way the town, if they really don't want this type of lighting, then don't bring it in through the back door by calling it a sign and then prohibiting it. Just prohibit this type of lighting if that's where the town really wants to end up. And we think there's a disconnect, frankly, between the definition of a sign and then the prohibition of display lighting. Because we don't believe that this lighting is displaying anything on the building. So that's our case, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. It's quite simple. Is this a sign or isn't it? And if you find that it's a sign, then I guess you find for the building commissioner. Because there is a section that display lighting is prohibited. But we're not so sure that it is a sign, and we think that Mr. Laham, after installing this very expensive system, has made efforts to maybe bring it out of what could be an argument for a sign by making it perhaps less attractive by dimming it, and certainly willing to do that and have a permanent restriction on that going forward. And as I say, in good faith, I must tell you that we did have that dimming discussion with the building department, but that's not a, that's not a, that's not something that they wanted. They didn't want to go down that road. Let me put it that way. That's kind of what the comment was that we heard back. So happy to take questions. Mr. Laham is also on. If there's any questions about the process or the building or how it went forward. But we feel pretty strongly in this case that to start calling this type of lighting a sign, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And it involves a great deal of expense to Mr. Laham on a brand-new building. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Attorney Ford.
Does any board members have any questions for Attorney Ford before we hear from Assistant Building Commissioner Carter?
I have one question. Would you consider the Jeep, which is lit, and I can't see the name of the other, but would you consider those signs?
They are signs, and we got signed permits for those. You're absolutely correct. Those are signs. And signed permits were applied for and were issued.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, Attorney Ford, I understand your argument, and I think you have a very strong sort of equitable reliance argument to the extent this was presented. But I guess my question goes back to the definition. Clearly, the reason this was put in there, it's got to be either to advertise, inform, or attract the attention of the public, right? I mean, why else would you put it in? I guess I'm trying, and I understand your argument, the way you structured it, and I'm trying to get around the attract the attention part. How is this not intended to attract attention?
Well, I think, and that's a good question, and we struggled over that particular part of this. And because the language is very awkward in the definition of the sign. And the conclusion we came to that there's probably no lights on a building that don't attract attention in some form. Lights that are shined on the building, the lights in the parking lot, all of those attract attention. The question is, can you simply say, well, that one, even though all the other lights attract my attention too, I'm going to call that one a sign? And because I am, it's then subject to the prohibition under sixty-one C. I think the town frankly would be much better off if they, if this is something they really want to control, which is what Robin Anderson has indicated in the co-compliance manager in her letter, then I think they need to meet it head-on and call it what it is and just prohibit certain types of lighting in the town on buildings. Rather than to try this backdoor thing through a sign. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me and leaves far too much doubt. And the purpose in bylaws is to clearly and distinctly say to people what's allowed and what's prohibited. And I don't think this does that, frankly.
Thank you.
Like sort of follow-up to Matty's point. I look at them as kind of like picture frames here. What is intended to be, or what is this, what is inside those windows, inside the picture frames?
Can I jump in on that, Mike?
Sure. This is Mr. Laham, Mr. Chairman. Could he respond to that?
Yeah, of course.
So thank you so much, board members and Jeff, for attending to resolve this, hopefully. This is clearly a design intent. There is no clear definition as to why that's there and why it's not there. If you notice the rest of the building, we have lighting that is all around the other three sides of the building. So if we put wall pack units on the front of the building, they would illuminate more light than we have currently. It's part of the OEM's design intent. I've built seven buildings in the town of Barnstable over the last several years. What the OEMs are requesting of us is what we built. When we receive our plans from them, whether it's the color of the exterior of the building, the color of the ACM panels, the illumination that's inside as well as outside, it's all within the context of what their, I would call, national image is for this building. So a Jeep, this is their design. The total width of those lights is about three-plus inches. If we were really trying to make something attract, we would significantly increase that. So as far as why is it around the windows? It's not just around the windows, Mr. Dewey. It's around, it also has where the entrance is. It also has where the service drives them. And clearly, you read our application for permit, it was in there. We filed it, the building department approved it. And then, as counsel has stated, to come through the back door, to pull this up at the eleventh hour, after the building is built, someone shows up and tells you, this is not correct. I'm not so certain what we would call it, but what we're asking the board to do is look at this and understand how it occurred, what occurred. And again, as counsel has said, this is not an inexpensive installation to have these lights installed. The next step, again, counsel has pointed this out to you, is we disconnected half of it to make everybody happy and to please everybody. And then I put dimmers on to drop it down even lower. The two pictures that Ms. Brigham brought up, one was a picture with the lighting on and one was practically down to zero. It's almost a dimmer light stage. So if you look at that, you could say to yourself, it's certainly an improvement. And it's not meant to not compromise. It's meant to say, okay, if you think that's trying to attract somebody, we're going to prove to you it's not. So at the level it's at today, there's no attraction at all. Because as Mr. Hurwitz pointed out, the word Jeep and the word Cape Cod, those illuminate more than around the windows and around the entrance and around the service driveway.
So thank you, Mr. Laham. Mr. Dewey, I'm not sure we, that was completely responsive to your question. I want to make sure your question gets answered. Did you ask what was the lighting inside the windows? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry, I can hear me now?
Yes, I can.
I would, what was, what's the outline, what's inside the outline, you know, inside the windows? As I look at it, it's sort of, it's an outline of a display. So I'm on the assumption that cars will be inside those windows, inside the frame of those lights, correct?
If we could bring maybe Anna some of the pictures back, we can look in those windows and you can see, you can see inside the dealership itself. You can see lighting inside there. I'm not sure you can see cars. But Mr. Laham would know better than I, certainly. There it is. You'll see the showroom, maybe the offices on the left and an entranceway.
No, there's cars, Mike, there's cars, there would be cars on display inside that showroom. Is that what you're asking, sir?
Yeah, I think that's what he's asking.
Yes, absolutely. So I apologize if I didn't answer your question. These pictures were taken before we technically opened. We were in the construction phase. The lights went on. Jeff Carter stopped in to visit with us, and we told him what we would do. But these are all meant to be the showroom glass, so when you see from the exterior, if you drove by there today, sir, you'd see the cars there, not the empty showroom area.
And how late at night are the lights on, Mr. Laham?
I'm sorry?
Then that answers my question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Anna, do you mind just going now off of share screen so I can see everyone? Thank you. Are there any other board members that have questions? I think that maybe we should hear from Assistant Building Commissioner Carter. There's no else has questions at this time.
Oh, wait.
Mr. Carter, do you want to, did you have any you want to sort of fill in or summarize for us?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Chairman Dewey and members of the CBA. I think we're going to hit on some of the similar notes. It's, I guess, a matter of interpretation of those of those ordinances. Think under two forty sixty-one C prohibited signs, as Attorney Ford did read out, that it does say that including lights which outline any parts of a building or which are affixed to any ornamental portion thereof are prohibited under the sign ordinance. And then if you match up the definition of a sign under two forty sixty in the definitions, a sign specifically spells out that a light is considered a sign and that any device which is used to advertise, inform, and attract the attention of the public and which it's designed to be seen from the outside of the building is a definition of a sign. The appellant argues that the signs are intended to attract attention, and we do agree with that. This property is primarily situated in the main thoroughfare, leading directly to and from the commercial village. If the intention of light lighting provision is not to serve as a sign and to specifically not attract attention, then I don't think the appellant would be here for this meeting tonight. The appellant also argues that the lighting provisions were depicted in the construction plans, which they were. But the building inspector doesn't always review the aesthetics of those plans for the signs. The signs, many times we get these commercial, national, companies coming in to do projects in Hyas. They have signs that are depicted on their plans. They change throughout the process, and we deal with that through sign permitting, not through the building permit. And that was what was done here. These were not part of the sign package. And therefore, we determined that it was a prohibited sign when we responded to the complaint that we received. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. I think that's helpful, and I think Robin Anderson's email was, or summary was helpful as well. Does anyone have any questions for Assistant Building Commissioner Carter? Go ahead, Mark.
I do. Assistant Commissioner, is the, do you think the intent of two forty sixty or two forty sixty-one C is more of a safety concern, or is it an aesthetic concern?
I think the intent was to draw attention to attract is what is considered a sign. Trying to regulate signs, that's why it's under the prohibited sign ordinance. I'm not sure if it's a safety part of safety concerns. I'm not sure. I can't answer it.
Mark, do you mean like safety from the roadway?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, when we're talking about attracting attention, you know, where does, where does, I mean, it is the illumination that's attracting this because I'm assuming if the illumination is down to twenty-five percent of its original. I mean, I drove by it at night, certainly when it was full bright, yeah, it attracts your attention. It's more of a picture frame. And I don't know where task lighting becomes, you know, becomes sign. I don't know where that border is on that. But if the, if the, if the illumination of that, the, that lighting is equal to or less than the light that comes out of the showroom, I guess I just don't know if it's a clear interpretation. If it was on the original plan, I understand that maybe it wasn't included in the site, in the sign package. But I think it would have been a question of, even if I were doing this, and I'm just, I'm just stepping, taking a thirty-thousand-foot look here. If somebody were to ask me and point to what is a sign and what would be included in a package, I would maybe naively assume that a sign is in fact an actual, you know, sign or the Jeep logo, or I don't know that I would necessarily have intuitively known that this was, that the, that the strip lighting was a sign per se. And I'm not really even arguing for or against it. I'm just making a comment or an observation that I don't think it's intuitive. I think if you drill down on it and you really get into the language, yes. But I guess I would ask, Mr. Carter, has this, is this type of lighting come up ever in the past where it's been denied? That you have had experience with, I guess, or has it come up in other more national chain signage that you've seen in the recent past where a lot of things are getting rebuilt?
I have not seen any specific outlines of a building with wood lights, no. But I don't have the full institutional knowledge of some of the permitting that's happened in the past. But I will say that we do interpret the language of the way that the zoning ordinance is written, and that's what we do to make, inform our determinations before we send out violations. And that's the way we interpreted the language in this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
And Mark, to that point, I mean, what's before us is a definition that is in our zoning code that, you know, really is what we're determining here is if this is a sign based on the definition that's written, not on our common knowledge of what is a sign or not a sign. And I believe, Attorney Ford, if we were to, you know, hold with the building commissioner here, you could apply for a variance on this on this situation, or is that not the case?
No, no, we certainly could. We thought in the first instance that it was enough of a question, particularly at the twenty-five percent illumination, that it didn't fit under the prohibited section because at that point, as your brother, Mr. Hanson, has pointed out, at twenty-five percent, it doesn't attract. There's other lights far brighter than that at the building. Your eye doesn't go to it. And so I think it's very hard to suggest that at that illumination, it attracts because it's just an outline at that point. It's not, it's really not drawing the attraction. There are many things that are brighter than that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, on just what I was speaking about, I was more making the point that it was not included in the sign package and as Mr. Carter pointed out, I just was saying that I don't think it was, I don't think it was left out of the sign package on purpose. I think, again, I don't know that that is an intuitive thing to include in the sign package, which is why I was wondering, since it was on the original plan, is that something that would have been called out? It was just a curiosity more, and I understand the language. You see where I'm going with that? That I don't, I think there's still the determination. I think there's still the determination of is, is a sign. But I guess, I guess on the language specifically, yes. I just don't think it was left out on purpose and it sort of brings us to where we are right now.
Yeah, I agree. I don't, I don't, I don't think it was left out necessarily on purpose, but you know, what is before us is the ordinance and the definition. And so what happened then is, is sort of irrelevant. I think we just need to determine, and we should probably open public comment, we can just deliberate this, but you know, that the definition says light and it also says in the prohibited signs, which outline any part of building which are affixed to any ornamental portion thereof. I mean, the, the definition is, is there, whether it was missed in a, a permitting review or not. You know, that's what's before us, right?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, but Mr. Chairman, this is Mike Ford, with all due respect.
Yeah.
You don't jump from the definition sign light and then go right down to the prohibited section. You have to read the definition itself. It has to be a light which is used to advertise, inform or attract the attention of the public. And there are so many lights on that property as there are with any big thing. You, you have to read the whole definition. You can't just say, oh, a light is a sign. No, it, it's got to be a device which is used to advertise, inform or attract the attention of the public. Your eye's got to go to that. Which is why when they raised this issue, we said, hey, okay, well, lower the illumination. So your eye isn't even drawn to it when you go by because there's so many other things that are, are brighter than that. And, you know, we respect the fact that maybe we've got to do something and that's what Mr. Leham tried to do to resolve it. And so I think makes a much closer call.
Those lights are not to attract your eye to the cars that are on display in the window?
No, they're not, Mr. Dewey. And if you don't mind, I'd like to speak to that for a moment. If the intent or the interpretation, I believe what the intent is was exactly as you stated. What we've done is we've taken the lighting down so it does not, we, the, the question is, can it attract your attention? We've said, we don't want you to have that question at all. What we've done is say, we're going to take away the opportunity to think that that could be an issue by reducing the lighting that does not attract. If you put a meter on that light that's around the windows and you put a meter on the lights in the parking lot, which is greater? You could then say those lights in that parking lot are attracting attention. You're damn right. Because I've got multi millions of dollars of inventory sitting there. We have to secure it. So there's a security issue for the exterior lighting to show and display the vehicles. Now, I would like to take a step backwards for a moment here and address the board in and of itself in its entirety. I have built the best buildings bar none of any automotive facility and mostly of anyone in this town. At our last hearing, we talked about building housing. Today we're here to see you. I have no desire to argue with the board. As a matter of fact, I think the board has been generous and kind to us in every board on the town of Barnstable. And we've built many buildings and we've held hand in hand. If you heard Attorney Ford describe what occurred, this was on a complaint that Mr. Carter received. That when we, if I thought that I was doing anything, it did not check every single box. And I think Mr. Hanson somewhat described that. We submitted it. We got it approved. The electrical inspector saw it. Everyone signed off on it. It wasn't like we just said, hey, we're going to put this in after the fact. We didn't try to slide something in. We put it up. When someone came back with a comment and said, hey, those lights are bright, what did we do? We instantly took action and reduced the lighting so that would never be an issue. I'm not here to argue. I've got better things to do as well as all of you do. I'm not going to be the one who fights the town or the board. I've never done that. I've always done above and beyond and I would take deference to what Mr. Carter said. If you drive down Yarmouth Road, my signature is on that road. I have improved every single solitary building on that road from the auto salon to the Jeep store to the BMW store. And go to the Rotary. We've done the same thing at Audi. We've improved. If you go back, Mr. Dewey, you look at those pictures in the past, we have done so much to make it better. Why would I tee you off on putting lights around a building if I thought they were in violation? There's no reason for it. This was clearly something that only after someone complained. The fact of the matter is, and I think Attorney Ford stressed this earlier, if you really want to tee off somebody, you could drive around town and you'd have a hundred violations. And I asked that of Mr. Carter and he said, we only go after enforcement when someone complains, Joe. And I can appreciate that. We all have better things to do. But if you go to the back of the mall where the TD Bank is, they installed these EV chargers. Every one of them have those lights on them. No one's complained about that. And no one's addressed the issue. I'm not trying to pour sand on somebody else. My issues are mine. I own them. I took immediate action. I reduced the lighting and I would respectfully request the board agree with us in this matter. I think if you want to fix this issue with signage, the best thing to do is what Attorney Ford said. Go back and fix it. And from my perspective, I've taken action already. I will not let the board get upset with me. But I will absolutely positively stand by my rights. Yes, we can file for variance, but Mr. Dewey and board members, we thought a little bit of our history and our past would prove that this is not clear. And if it was, we would abide by it. We would not take the opportunity to go in here and say, hey, this is something we're going to do. This is not just what I think is, the intent of this was, they didn't want a bunch of people string lights around their windows and flashing. And there's many of those cases out there. So I'm sorry I've taken so long to maybe exhaust my frustration here, but thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Leham, it's not that, that I, I'm not going to speak for anyone else, that I don't want you to have the lights around there. It's finding a path to get you there. Because we are constrained to what is before us here, which is really truly looking at the definition as was written by, we, you know, we don't make policy here. We, we are, we're finding a path here. And I'm just trying to look at the definition and, and the building department has looked at the same definitions and, and you know, we can't just decide, oh, we like the lights. We can overturn that. We can interpret the, the zoning bylaw differently than the building department did. But we can't just, you know, say, yes, we like the lights and, and let, let the Jeep have the lights.
No, we, we appreciate that, Mr. Dewey. I'm not, I, I'm not looking for special privileges, but I think Counselor Ford has defined for you, it does not attract. It's not meant to attract. I, I, if you came to me and said, Joe, I want you to do this, I would do it. But I did it in, without anyone asking, we did all this. So I, I respect what you're trying to do and I respect Mr. Carter's position. Nobody was complaining. Somebody complained. Nobody, nobody said, let's go shut those lights off. They only, somebody complained. We took action immediately. I've done that in every single case. I would not compromise myself or you. So I do appreciate your compense and I, and I respectfully request that you would find that this does not attract and it is in compliance. And again, whatever it takes to make you happy, we're here to do that. We're not here to argue.
I appreciate that. So just to, to go back to the board, I think if anyone has any comments now, but like, we should open for public comment and then we can deliberate unless anyone has any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a question, please. To Mr. Carter. What was this complaint? You received a complaint from what, a drive by or a neighbor or butter or what?
No, not on butter.
I'm not, I don't know who filed the complaint, but we did have a complaint come in to our office, I think mid-December. It was assigned to me as an inspector and that's when we went to the site and started the discussion with Mr. Leham.
All right, thank you. A question to Attorney Ford or, or Mr. Lantham. Is this Auto Row, is this, what's on, I'm going to call Willow Street. I'm not sure. Is that where the location of this?
Yeah, it's Yarmouth Road, which is also known as Willow Street.
Yeah, so, so this, okay, so. Okay.
If you look at, if you come off the exit in the highway, everybody calls it Willow because that's what it says on the highway. But it's, it's Willow Street in Yarmouth, it's Barnstable Road in Hyannis.
Yeah, I mean, it's all auto dealers one side of the other. Okay, thank you.
On, on one side, sir, we own fourteen and a half acres and we have dramatically improved that landscape on that side of the road.
I understand. Thank you.
All right, let's open for public comment. Anna, did we receive anything? I didn't, don't think there was anything in the folders.
No, we didn't receive anything.
All right. Is anyone here to speak to this? No. All right, seeing none, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, may I have one last comment that I, I didn't get? Thank you for that privilege. When you hear an appeal or decision to the building inspector, the statute's very clear, you stand in the shoes of the building commissioner. And the statute says you can make any decision that the building commissioner could have made. That's, that's your job when you review it. So you guys are the building commissioner tonight looking at this issue. I respectfully suggest that the dimmer aspect of this, as it affects the phrase attracting is something I'd encourage you to look at. And frankly, if, if you found against the building inspector here, but with a condition that they be dimmed to the point where you, looking at this now, in your building inspector's shoes, were dimmed to the point you didn't feel was an attraction, that's within your flexibility, I, I'd respect, respectfully suggest. You don't necessarily have to say, oh, we can't consider illumination because we just have to read the words on the page and then make a decision as to whether the building commissioner was correct or incorrect. I think it's a little broader than that. Chapter forty eight, section seven, eight and fifteen, when you read them together, says the Board of Appeals stands in the shoes of the building commissioner and could make any decision that he or she could have made. I think include consideration of illumination. Just a suggestion and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Attorney Ford. Also, I'll make another motion to close public comment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote on closing public comment. Herb Bodensee.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
And Manny Als.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So public comment's closed. It brings it back to the board for deliberation. Or if you have questions directed to the applicant, you can ask questions, but we don't have any more public comment. Does anyone have any sort of thoughts?
I just have one question regarding the dimming. How did you accomplish that?
So first of all, as Mr. Leham described, the lighting consisted of two strings of lighting or two tubes of lighting together, which is why. One of those was completely disconnected. So we ended up with one and a half inches, if you will. Then he had a dimmer installed so that he could control the brightness of that. And what he's had out there that some of you have seen is dimming that by fifty percent down. So it's really twenty five percent of what the original lighting was. So he now has that dimmer and frankly could control the illumination to whatever the board felt was necessary to take it out of the phrase attracting the public's attention. That, that's all I was suggesting.
Okay, so, so the dimmer, which is probably a manual dimmer, correct?
That's correct. We, we installed a dimmer just like you'd see in, in your home, Mr. Hurwitz, that you could bring it all the way down. So it's at the lowest possible level it could be at today. That's great.
Right, but you can also bring it up.
We are in favor of you curtailing us from any more than what's there. And that's what Attorney Ford is suggesting, that you could say we would do this with a condition that it would not exceed the current lowest possible level. And I could find a way to set that so that no one can ever touch the dimmer. It's not a dimmer that's exposed to, to the public. It's in the electrical room and it's, and I can, no one's going to touch that. And I could assure the board, if you approve that or are willing to help us resolve all this, that we would accept that as a condition.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mark.
Just one. I think this is for Assistant Commissioner Carter. So is the, is the language that the town is taking issue with, does it or does it not include the outlining of an aesthetic element of the building? Is that something we are not considering anymore? Is this mainly about the, the drawing attention? Sorry, I'm reading as I.
Yeah, I think it's a combination of both. I think reading what is prohibited and with the combination of a sign and the attraction of the lights, the combination of those two makes it a violation. And I don't know what level is appropriate to say it doesn't attract attention.
So, so is the outlining of an aesthetic element of the building, is that prohibited or is it not? Is it just interpretation?
It's prohibited.
Mark, it's sort of, it's like a two-part thing here where it's, is it a sign?
Yes, I understand.
And if it is determined a sign, then it says which outline any part of the building, then it would be prohibited. And again, I would just remind the board what is before us is overturning the building commissioner's decision here. I don't know that we necessarily have an avenue. You know, if this was a variance, we would be in a situation where we could condition it. I'm not really sure we can condition this with, you know, that the lights are constantly on, you know, that they're solid, that they could never blink and that they are at a certain wattage and, and brightness. I'm not sure if that's before us. And that's why I, you know, pushed Attorney Ford before that, you know, I would feel more comfortable if this was coming back as a, a variance request. But maybe I'm wrong and Attorney Ford, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we're in a position to, to condition that, though.
Well, I, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not going to give you legal advice. I'm just going to suggest to you that, and, and we could come back as a variance. But I'm going to suggest to you that, and you may want to get advice through the town attorney's office, that I think the statute's pretty clear. You can make any decision that the building commissioner could have made based on the same facts. And it would seem to me it was within his discretion to look at the question of illumination as it affects the phrase attracts the public. And you may want to get some legal advice on that from the town attorney's office, but I think that's within your wheelhouse, Mr. Chairman, frankly, without having to go to a variance.
Question, question of order, Mr. Chairman, is the public hearing closed?
Yes.
It is.
Okay, so, so it's back to the board for deliberation?
Yeah, deliberations and if you have specific questions for the applicant that you want answers to.
Right, well, my position is I don't want to get into a position as a board to have to determine the level of illuminations. Because I don't know how you do that. You know, it's bright, it's brighter, it's this, it's that. I mean, that's impossible to regulate on its own. Either it's illuminated or it's not illuminated regardless of the level is my opinion. And so I think that brings it back to the question of building illumination versus sign illumination. I believe that's where we are according to Mark and everyone agrees. And I, I would rather have seen this as a variance so I could vote on it appropriately because you know, I mean, I don't, regardless of that Willow Street, who cares? I mean, you know, it doesn't affect anybody. And if you can drive by that and all of a sudden see a Jeep dealer and say, oh, boy, I want one of those. I mean, that's a destination point. That's not a, that's nothing more than destination, however it's lit in terms of my personal opinion. So I, I have a problem with this in terms of if the, if the regulation is that an outline of a building is prohibited regardless of the intensity. And that's the ruling of the building commissioner. And I would favor that and hopefully to see this as a variance request. That's all.
Mr. Chair, if I might. I, I, I agree. I, I, what Paul just said, I think the definition, and I think what, let me back up. What troubles me about this case is clearly the applicant was willing to submit signs for review and approval. And if we could turn the clock back and they were told that these were signs, I'm inclined to believe that they would have submitted it for the appropriate approval and we wouldn't be here. So that's, it's unfortunate that after the fact that, that there's been this finding that, that these, these, these light, lights represent sign. I, I do think that, I agree with Paul. I'd rather see this as, as, as a variance or approval. Because I, I think Because I, I think the language of the definition says a light that is used to attract. Doesn't go to effectiveness in attracting attention. I, and, and, and I'm sorry, but design elements are that. They're used to attract. Whether you lower it to the point where it's overwhelmed by something else and to Paul's point, you know, do we want to get in the business of saying, yep, that's the right appropriate level of brightness? I think that gets overly complicated. So I, I think it's, is it ambiguous? There's some ambiguity here, but I think parsing it really carefully, thinking of a light used to attract attention. Again, forget whether or not it's effective. Um, and, and, and then that light which outlines any part of a building, I, I think that, could it be clearer? Absolutely. Uh, but, but I, I, I think to, to your point, Attorney Ford, if I were to step in the shoes of the building inspector, I, I, I can see the path to say this is not permitted. But I go back to say it's unfortunate we're here because the intent from the beginning was obviously to comply. And if that, if this had been identified at, at the outset as, as an issue, I think it would have gone through the appropriate lighting approvals and we wouldn't be here. But my inclination is, is, is to affirm, um, the, the, the order of, of, of the, uh, billing inspector here and, and, and hopefully see this as a request for a variance. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Manny. Yeah, I mean, I, I, that's sort of where I'm, I, I think the intent of the, of the bylaw was to avoid, you know, sometimes you see in different parts of the country Chinese food restaurants with lights running up the ridgeline of all of the roofs and, and things of that nature, which clearly are to attract your, your, you to that, that location. So I think that was the intent. While this may not be nearly as, you know, sort of egregious and whatever is that, I think it's unfortunately falls within that definition. So I, I, I think, again, I feel as well that it would come back as a variance and, you know, we'd like to work through it. Mister Leham has contributed to some very nice buildings on that, that corridor. So, you know, and I think it, it does fit within that character. Um, and, you know, I, I think, I think an argument could be made there, but leave that to Attorney Ford. Um, but that's also kind of where I am. I, Herb and Mark, your thoughts?
I'm saying. I, I, it's a tough path as it is presented. And I think, I think everybody here are reasonably could look at this as a variance and find a way to quickly and efficiently, you know, find a way, a path through this.
Um, Herb, any other thoughts or does someone want to make findings or?
Well, I was going to actually ask Attorney Ford, um, if this, if the building inspector's, uh, or department's, uh, decision is upheld, will you seek a variance?
Well, I, I, I think we would. I, I'd want to discuss that with my client, obviously, and I haven't had a chance to do that yet, but, uh, we probably would. I mean, in some of these situations, um, to avoid having to even take that, we could withdraw without prejudice, but we can't withdraw on this one because statute limitations is run. So I think you have to make your decision, which is you, what you're prepared to do. And then I'll have that discussion with Mister Leham and, and, uh, I think you'll probably see us again.
Oh, I'm sure of that. Okay, thank you.
Can I make a, can I make a quick comment on that?
Sure, public comments closed.
The public hearing is closed. It's up to you, the chairman, Mister Leham.
Okay.
Yeah, it's closed. Um, let's move on.
Does someone want to make findings on it?
I'll do it.
Go ahead, Manny.
So on appeal number two zero two four dash zero zero six, um, five eighteen, five fifty-six Amherst Road LLC has filed an appeal of an administrative official's decision in accordance with the forty-one twenty-five B. Uh, the appellant seeks to overturn the notice of violation and order to cease to assist in abate from the building commissioner dated January nineteen twenty twenty-four. The violation determined by the building commission is of the Barnstable zoning ordinance, chapter two forty, section sixty-one C, prohibited signs. Um, I find based on the evidence we've heard, um, that the, the decision of the building commissioner, uh, is consistent with the statute. Uh, I find that the sign, the definition of a sign, um, uh, includes a light used to attract attention. And and I also find that under, under, um, sixty-one C, that any light, uh, any display lighting which outline any part of a building is prohibited. So I would, based on the evidence we've heard, uh, I find, uh, that, that the board should, uh, uphold the building commissioner's determination that the lights as installed outline the sections of the building and are in violation of the ordinance.
Thank you, Manny. Um, so, um, Manny's made a motion to uphold the building commissioner's.
Yeah, this is Paul, uh, I, uh, second.
Paul seconds. Um, so we have a motion and a second to uphold the building commissioner's ruling. I need a roll call vote. Herb Bodensee?
In favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Mark Hanson?
In favor.
Manny Alves?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So the building commissioner's, uh, determination is upheld.
Thank you for your consideration and, and your thoughtfulness, all members of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero six, Lion LLC has applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash fifty-seven. Circumstances warranting reduction of requirements to the extent necessary. The applicant proposes to add eighteen additional seats to their existing restaurant and has been advised at site plan review by the building commissioner that the proposed new off-street parking area consisting of twelve spaces being leased from airport requires a special permit. The applicant suggests that this board could alternatively find proposed additional off-street parking is permitted use under section two forty, fifty-one A and zoning relief would not be required. The subject property located at fifteen Hinckley Road, Hyannis, Massachusetts, and assessors now three eleven as parcel zero two zero zoning district. Um, sitting on this again will be our regular members, myself, Herb Bodensee, Paul Pennard, Mark Hanson and Denise. Are you good to sit on this?
Yes.
All right. Um, Attorney Ford, Jeff Ford.
Good evening, Attorney Jeff Ford here, representing the applicant, uh, Lion LLC, uh, DBA Pandavian. A little bit of background, they obviously own the Pandavian Restaurant and Bakery next door. Um, you're probably all familiar with it. Um, they've recently gone through, um, adding eighteen additional seats and a pizza oven within the existing building. Um, and we've gone to site plan review. We've obtained our approval from them. They did send us to the ZBA as indicated um, under section two forty fifty-seven, which deals with off-street parking and when you're seeking a reduction in off-street parking. So I had just, obviously this isn't an appeal from the building commissioner or anything. I had just put in our narrative that we thought that this, initially, we thought that this was something that would be as of right, given the location um, under section two forty fifty-one A, which allows an applicant to have off-street parking as long as it's within the same business district and within three hundred feet, which this is. So that was the only reason we added that. Obviously, if the board, you know, we'd look to you for, for discretion and, and, and you've, you've handled these in guidance. So, um, we think it certainly fits the criteria for a special permit if you feel it does fall under two forty fifty-seven.
Okay, does anyone, any board members have any questions for the applicant? Um, Attorney Ford, so can you just summarize here? So the parking that you're suggesting that would be used is located exactly where?
So, so the, um, Pandavian has an agreement with the airport. Um, we included a plan, um, with our submission, which was done by BSC. That's the one we took to site plan review. Um, it should be in your packet. I, do you have it there? I'm not sure if Anna can bring it up or not. It might be helpful. If not, we, if you have it, we can just talk about it.
I have it. I don't know if other board members have it. Anna, are you able to pull it up? Oh, here we go.
So it's, it's part of the application package?
Yes, you scroll, scroll towards the, the end, Anna. I think it was, I'm seeing it down there at the bottom. You're getting close.
Oh, okay.
Can you reduce that?
Yes.
Please, sorry.
And?
I think it's, um, if you keep scrolling a little, I can't. Okay, so that highlighted, there you go. So if, if you're looking at the plan that's up on the screen, you'll see the, the Pandavian building, um, which is, which is there. Um, to the side of that is those highlighted spaces. That is on the part of the airport parking lot and there's twelve spaces there. Um, Pandavian has an agreement with the airport to use those. And I've also included pictures that I sent this afternoon that shows that all twelve of those spaces have been posted with signage that specifically says that they're to be used for Pandavian parking only. So they have an agreement, um, with the airport to use those spaces. So that is the off-street parking that is before you. Um, the restaurant and bakery currently has sixty-three parking spaces. Um, we are adding eighteen seats. We only needed two additional parking spaces for those seats. Pandavian thought it would be good to just pick up an, an additional twelve just to offset the business if they needed it and have some overflow parking. So that is a, a formal agreement that's been executed with the airport. And as I said, we have pictures of it too with the signage if the board's interested in looking at those that shows they've all been marked and, and they're to be used for Pandavian only for their customers.
Okay, so the, the, um, so the special permit request would be to allow those to be counted?
Yeah, so, so my understanding and, and coming out of site plan was we were told by the building commissioner that off-street parking requires a special permit from the ZBA. And so I had pointed, pointed that out in my application and the section that we were directed to file under by site plan review is entitled circumstances warranting a reduction of requirements. And it says the zoning board of appeals may reduce the requirements of this article by the granting of a special permit only if lesser off-street parking is shown to be adequate given such special circumstances. And they give examples, um, you know, use of a common parking area by different uses, having different peak hours, you know, like a municipal type lot situation. Age and other characteristics, or, oristics of the occupants, um, characteristics in value, you know, invalidating normal calculation methods, which we haven't done, and supplementary parking that you're relying on somewhere else. And, and the only reason I raised it that I thought it was as of right was this is parking that's marked just for them. They have their own twelve spaces. They have all the other parking on site. Um, so I just thought two forty fifty-one, which is, which is also in the ordinance, says locations of parking spaces. And it says all off-street parking spaces required by this article shall be located on the same lot as the use for which the spaces are required, except that in non-residential districts, parking spaces may be located on another lot within three hundred feet and in the same zoning district as the use for which is required. So in our particular case, the airport is in the B district. We're in the B district. It's within three hundred feet. We have an agreement with them. The spaces are marked. So our site plan that was prepared by BSC actually shows we are carrying ten more than is what's required under the, um, under the parking regs. So that's why I thought maybe it, it would be something that would be as of right. Certainly if the board, you've probably seen these previously, I would gather. If you haven't, that's the only reason I threw it in there because this one's a little, a little unique where we, everything seemed to fit under that section. We obviously, if, if, if you feel two forty fifty-seven is where this belongs, I think it fits under that as well with a special permit. But it, it would seem two forty fifty-one A would be where we went to first for this parking. So that's why I, I raised it.
Um, and, and the taking of the spaces from the air, airport doesn't affect their parking requirements, correct? They're within their limits?
Yes, I, I know the airport it has an extremely large parking field and, and they've been trying to come up with ways, I think, to utilize some of those areas without having them be wasted space. And this was a, a perfect example where Pandavian is right across the street. And it turned out to be a, a nice fit. And so they worked together with them on these twelve spaces.
Mister, Mister Chair, I'm not sitting on this, but can I ask you a question?
Yeah, for sure.
So, eh, eh, Attorney Ford, was, was two fifty, fifty-one A raised with the building inspector?
Uh, yes, yes, it was. And again, we, we chose not to appeal this. I was a little surprised because I, I've had these in the past and I've even had similar situations out at this site. So I did not think it would be something that would need a special permit. And I, I think the intent of the special permit requirement is if you're providing less and you're trying to, for example, if we wanted to say, hey, the airport next door, there's a lot of people that land there. They walk over to Pandavian. So we don't really need to carry the amount of spaces we need because we get a lot of people on foot traffic there. So that would be an example where we could say, hey, we're going to carry less spaces. And it would seem it would fit kind of under a special permit. In this case, we actually carried ten more. So uh, we're not, we're not asking for any reduction. We've actually given a surplus.
Eh, eh, this sounds like, you know, and, and I don't know that this is what the board does. You're asking for an advisory opinion of sorts. Because you're providing more than what's required under a provision of the ordinance that allows you to do it within the same district, within three hundred feet. So I, I, I guess I don't understand the ask.
Well, so we were kind of put in, in a tough spot. We, we went to site plan review. Obviously, we want to get, get this area going. And we were told we cannot open and get our occupancy permit unless we get a special permit because off-street parking requires a special permit. And it does, but it does only when you're showing that you are seeking a reduction. So that's why I thought the board could make a finding that i- it's unnecessary because we're not seeking a reduction and you'd have to make a finding that we're seeking a reduction.
Yeah, I.
I agree, Manny. Yeah, I think this is A and R. This is like, I, I, it doesn't make sense.
I, so I, and I tried to, I, I did discuss this with the building commissioner and gave him my position. I gave it, gave it to him in writing and I said, look, I think I'm right on this one. This, I haven't had to do this before. And he said, no, you gotta go. And so in an effort to keep this project moving, we've, we've already pulled all our permits. We've gone to licensing. This has kind of been a, a hiccup at the end here. So we really want to obviously try and see this through and to file an appeal and go through that whole process. Only to, you know, to find out we may need a special permit anyway. We didn't want to take that chance. So we went ahead and filed as we were directed. I just threw that in because I was, I was kind of struggling with why we needed the special permit.
I, 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 this is Paul. I think this is ridiculous. Let's just go ahead, prove it or whatever and, and move on with life.
Uh, which path would you want to go, Paul? Again, we don't have before us overturn the building commissioner. So it's, it's one or the other on the special permit.
Well, I mean, so we proved the special permit. I mean, it's bureaucracy at its finest. And if that's what they petitioned for and so we'll give it to them and, you know, whether they need it or not.
What I'm asking you, Paul, on two forty-one twenty-five C or two forty fifty-seven?
Well, I don't know. You, you make a decision.
Well, let's keep moving on. So I will open for public comment. Anna, I don't believe you received any correspondence on this?
No, we didn't.
Okay. Um, anyone here to speak to this? Seeing none, um, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote on closing public comment. Herb Bodensee?
In favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Mark Hanson?
In favor.
And Denise Johnson? Denise, you're muted.
In favor.
All right, so public comments closed. It brings it back to the board to deliberate. I think it's just how we want to go about doing it. I mean, it, it's, it seems to fit the spirit and intent of the special permit. It's just which, which way we'd want to go with it. Um, and anything we would want to condition, which I think it would just be that that agreement be enforced and be filed with the, um, with the permit, the special permit with the airport.
Sure. I, I, I just had a question on the suggested special permit findings. I had sent an, an email into staff earlier too, that number three doesn't seem to apply in our case here. We're, we were talking about twelve spaces on the airport property. And it's the, the, the full buildout. So we, we, we'd certainly be, you know, happy to swap that out with something that we filed, the, the parking agreement with the town on, on a regular basis, but the full buildout doesn't seem to apply to this one.
Or shall not be reduced. I mean, you know, whatever.
Um, someone want to make findings on it or someone else have any more thoughts?
I, I have one other thought. I would like to see the, uh, conditions or the findings that, um, instead of, uh, the proposed off-street parking area consisting of twelve, twelve spaces, I would say a minimum of, a minimum of two spaces being leased by the, from the airport.
Okay. Um, so then, or so you want to go through, you want to go to the root of two forty-one twenty-five C?
Paul, maybe we could say shall maintain two?
Yeah, that's my other concern. Yeah, they, they have to maintain, but, but a minimum of two.
Yeah, they just, they needed two. The ten were, were over and above.
Right. So have to maintain a minimum of two to qualify for the special permit.
Okay. Does someone want to make findings on it?
Um, yeah, sure. With regard to special permit number two zero two four dash zero zero seven Lion LLC, um, two forty dash fifty says in circumstances warranting reduction of requirements. Um, for all special permits, board is required to make general findings pursuant to two forty dash one twenty-five C. Board should review the evidence presented by the applicant, staff and members of the public. And after weighing such evidence, it is encouraged to articulate if and how the evidence contributes to each of the required findings. One, that the application falls within a category specifically accepted the ordinance for a grant of a special permit and section two forty fifty-seven allows for a special permit. Number two, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance that would not represent substantial detriment, detriment to the public good with the neighborhood affected. I find that they are in fact, uh, providing additional, uh, spaces, ten additional spaces beyond the two that are required, which, uh, fulfills the intent of the zoning ordinance. And because we are in a, uh, non-residential zone, it would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Number three, a site plan has been reviewed and found approvable in accordance with the article herein subject to, uh, subject only to the issuance of a special permit. And we see the letter dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, I believe, from the building department, um, referencing that. Um, circumstances warranting reductions of requirements, which we're not asking for a reduction at this time. Those are my findings.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Mark's made a motion to approve special permit twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven based on the findings read. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a second roll call vote on approving, uh, permit twenty twenty-four zero zero seven. Herb, vote and see.
In favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Mark Hanson?
In favor.
Denise Johnson?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Um, and then Mark, conditions?
Uh, are we, are we leaving three or are we leaving three out?
I think we're leaving three out.
I mean, I, I guess, I, I mean, I guess my concern would be any expansion of the, the, the use without coming back to the board. But, um, you know, because we give them sort of, with the number of spaces we're allowing to be attached to the property, it would potentially allow them to expand the business without coming back to the board. I don't, I guess I could go either way on that, but it would be.
Well, if they expanded the business, they'd have to go back to the, they'd have to qualify for the parking in order to get the building permit. So.
But they could exclude, we're getting the ten, our ten extra right now. They would, they would count towards any.
But ten extra doesn't, we're not including ten extra in this, in this permission for the special permit.
Okay.
We're saying a minimum of two.
We feel comfortable just taking it out completely?
I do.
Sure.
Okay. So Mark, propose your conditions, please.
Yeah, I'm just going to, it's okay if I could just read, read those and then just add maybe something to one to include, uh, Paul's language. Special permit number two zero, uh, two four dash zero zero seven is granted to Lion LLC pursuant to section two forty dash fifty-seven circumstances warranting reduction or of requirements to the extent necessary. The applicant proposes to add eighteen additional seats to their existing restaurant has been advised at site plan review by the building commissioner that the proposed new off-street parking area consisting of twelve spaces, um, of which two must be maintained from the airport, requires a special permit. The applicant suggests that the board could alternatively find that the proposed additional off-street parking is permitted use under section two forty fifty-one A and zoning relief would not be required. It's subject properties located at fifteen Hinkley Road, Hyannis, Mass. Uh, number two, the site development shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the plan entitled Pandavion Restaurant Seating by BSC Group dated December fourth, twenty twenty-three. And number four, that the decisions, uh, I guess technically number three, this decision shall be recorded. The Barnstable County Registry of Deeds and copies of the recorded decisions shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals office and the building division prior conditions of a building permit. The rights authorized by the special permit must be exercised within two years unless extended.
Attorney Ford, is that acceptable as read?
Yes.
All right. So we'll take a vote on the conditions. Uh, Herb, vote and see.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Mark Hanson?
I'm in favor.
Denise Johnson?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Uh, so Attorney Ford, do you have your, uh, special permit? I hope that satisfies things and, uh, you guys can move forward.
Yes, thank you very much. I apologize for the, for the confusion on the two sections, but we, we kind of had to see it through here.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. So our last item of business, appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero eight nineteen Burst Road LLC and nineteen, and twenty-nine Burst Road LLC have a petition for a variance pursuant to section two forty-one twenty-five zoning board of appeals and MGL chapter forty-eight, section fourteen. Petitioner seeks a modification of use variant twenty-three dash zero zero three to change the distance between the proposed buildings to seven and a half feet. No additional zoning relief is required. The subject properties are located at nineteen and twenty-nine Burst Road, Hyannis, Mass. As shown on assessors maps, three-ten and three-eleven is parcel two eight nine and zero three nine respectively. They are located in the residence B, RB zoning district. Um, so I'm going to have the group that sat on the, on the original variance request, which Herb, I believe you were chairing at that point. So I'm going to hand this off to you. Uh, I think Mark, Paul, were you on this?
Yes.
Um, and I don't know, Anna, help me out. I, Aaron may have been on and he's not here. So, um, Denise and Larry?
I was not on the original one, no.
Denise, Larry or Manny, were you guys on it?
It's, I think so. It sounded familiar.
Okay. So we'll have Larry, Manny, Mark, Paul and Herb. And Herb, I'm going to hand it over to you.
All righty. So we have myself, Paul, Larry and Matt. Who else?
Mark, Larry and Manny.
Okay, Mark, Larry.
I've just been rotating who's assigned tonight down between our alternates.
Yeah. Denise was on.
Yeah, I was just on, so.
Oh, you were on it, Denise. Sorry, I thought you said.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't on the original. I said, no.
Okay.
Oh, I, I see your name on the decision. That's why I was, I mentioned that. I'm sorry.
Maybe I'm wrong, man.
Oh, well.
It was Herb, Denise, Paul, Aaron Webb and Mark.
Oh. Shows my memory.
Okay, let's go.
Are you okay to sit on it, Denise?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so we have vote and see, Pennard, Hanson, Johnson. Anybody else? Mark?
Yeah.
I said Mark, yes. Uh, but not Larry or Manny.
Yeah, someone's just filling in for Aaron. Who's that?
I, I, I think Jake asked me to fill in for Aaron.
Also. So.
Well, were you in attendance at that hearing?
No, I was not.
All right, then you, well, I guess you don't have to because this is, well, this is a modification of the hearing.
It's a new, you can assign whoever you want, Herb. It's a new one. I was just trying to keep consistency. Or whoever you want.
All right. Larry does.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, Attorney Ford?
Yes, uh, uh, hopefully I'll be very brief here. Uh, this is a modification of a use variance that the board, um, uh, granted a few months back, uh, for this property for eight, uh, dwelling units for workforce housing, um, which you restricted, um, their use to be for rent, uh, rental housing only and for employees and their families only of the business owners' properties located in the town of Barnstable. That's how you restricted it. What's before you tonight is simply to substitute one site plan for the other one. Nothing's changed in terms of the size of the buildings, the number of units, the height of the buildings, the style, they're all the same. It's simply the distance between the buildings changed. So they're all seven and a half feet apart rather than a couple of them on the last plan being only five feet apart. And as Mr. Laham looked at the requirement, um, because these buildings are not being sprinkled, that they be at least five feet apart and, uh, that that could take into consideration overhangs. That rather than redesign them, take overhangs off, he'd simply make them all seven and a half feet apart. I took the plan to Commissioner Florence. I said it was a use variance only. It complied with all of the dimensional requirements. They didn't give me relief from any dimensional requirements. I still meet all dimensional requirements. He said, however, it's a variance, you should go back to the board and get them to bless the substituted plan. So that's my presentation. That, that's all that's before you is simply to, um, change the location of a couple of the buildings. So they're now all seven and a half feet apart. They still meet all the setbacks and all the other dimensional requirements. We think it makes for a little better plan to have that distance between the buildings.
A good way to end this night. Um, does anyone have any questions for Attorney Ford?
No.
Just real quick, Attorney Ford, was this driven by the fire department or the building department? No, uh, it, it was driven by us going back and looking at the requirement to have the buildings be at least five feet apart in order not to be sprinkled. And they could be, but it might involve a redesign where we didn't have an overhang on. Oh, the overhangs. And do that, and rather than do that, we said, hey, we've got enough room to just make them seven and a half feet apart. So we got plenty to make it. So that, that's how it came about. Thank you.
I don't, I don't really understand why it's coming back to us because it sounds like you've made it better.
I think we have made it better and we've come back to you because I think the building commissioner felt that it was a variance and it's not for him to change the plans. We should go back to the board, um, even though it complied in all, all respects with the ordinance. So I'm happy to do that. And we came back for that reason. I think Denise, to answer your question, sometimes they, we look at footprints and when you include the overhangs, it's closer than it appears.
Oh, okay.
Okay, anyone else? Um, do we have anyone from the public who has any comments? Okay, hearing none, I will now close public comment. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Paul?
In favor.
Mark?
In favor.
Denise?
In favor.
Larry?
In favor.
And I am in favor. So public, uh, hearing is closed. Um, now, do we have any deliberations on this? I don't, uh, this is just because, I mean, your basic clause, any change to just for the final example, but, uh, it's only here just as a technicality. Uh, I don't see any discussion really.
Anyone else, Chairman?
Yes?
I have none. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, would anybody like to make findings? All right. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, um, variance number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero eight is seeking to modify variance number two, two oh two three dash three three to allow an increased distance between the proposed buildings to seven point five feet. No additional zoning relief is required. The subject properties are located at nineteen and twenty-nine Bears' Road, Hyannis, Mass. All other conditions are in effect. Um, Denise Johnson make a motion to grant variance twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash oh oh eight based on findings with, with conditions. Uh, zoning board, I move to grant variance twenty twenty-four zero zero eight subject to the following conditions.
Let's, um, vote on the findings first. Do I have a second on the findings?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, uh, Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Mark Hanson?
In favor.
Denise Johnson?
In favor.
And Larry Horwitz?
In favor.
Okay. Um, do you have, you have conditions?
Okay, uh, yes. Um, these are the conditions. Nineteen Bears Road LLC and twenty-nine Bears Road LLC have been granted a variance pursuant to section two forty dash one twenty-five.
Denise, I don't think you have to read them. Just say one, two, five and quote the date.
What do I have to do? I don't have to.
Staff report date.
Oh, okay.
The, the staff report is dated three fourteen twenty-four. And you might ask Attorney Ford if he has reviewed the, uh, conditions.
I, I have, Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with them. They're the exact same conditions of the prior variance. It's already recorded with the one exception of the revised plan.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
So we just need to have a vote on the conditions?
I second, I second the conditions.
Okay, uh, I lost my page here. Okay, uh, all in favor of granting this, uh, variance? Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Mark Hanson?
In favor.
Denise Johnson?
In favor.
Larry Horwitz?
In favor.
And I am in favor. Okay, well, that doesn't make up for the previous, uh, barrier or the issue with Mr. Laham, but let's hope that gets resolved. Uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate all your attention tonight.
Um,
thank you so much.
Do you want me to close the meeting or would you like to come back and close the meeting, Jake?
Uh, we have one more order of business today, um, the discussion over our, um, Paul's revised rules and regulations, which I believe we're, we're there with. Um, but Paul, Paul, if you want to give a quick summary, but I think we can do this pretty quickly because I think we.
Well, let's.
Got through everyone.
Thank you, thank you, Jake. Let's do this pretty quickly. Um, let's see, uh, I want to, uh, the purpose of this, to go back on this, by the way, Larry had just joined the board after we had had our, uh, discussions and Manny was, was not involved in them. But the purpose of what we're talking about today is we wanted to inconvenience to our, minimize inconvenience to our citizens who attend either the virtual or the in-person meeting, only to find out that withdrawal and continuance is being requested on a particular agenda item. Secondly, to minimize the inconvenience to our citizens who learn that the material pertaining to a particular agenda item has been submitted with insufficient, insufficient time to be previewed prior to the meeting, hearing. The third purpose is to provide a comprehensive source of procedural information pertaining to withdrawals and, and continuances to petitioners. So they don't necessarily have to go to a lawyer or if they do, they at least can understand why they're going to a lawyer with respect to withdrawals and continuances. And lastly, to, to allow, uh, allow us, the ZBA sufficient time to consider all the materials that are particular to an agenda item prior to the meeting. So you'll get them ten minutes before. Um, secondly, the research that we did, this is a quick recap here. We, uh, contacted all fifteen Cape towns. We contacted other Massachusetts towns, including, uh, Wellhoma, some Newburyport, Swamps, Get, uh, Worcester and, and Worcester and Anovera. And then we have selected large cities such as Boston, Chicago, Philadelphia, Dallas, San Francisco and Los Angeles. The guiding, one of the guiding things here was MGL, um, titled seven, chapter forty-eight, sections ten and eleven. Uh, we've had multiple legal reviews and it lists at least two ZBA reviews. Uh, one was June fourteenth, when, um, we took a poll of the voil of the board and determined what the construction should be. And then June twenty-eighth, and these are, by the way, last year, so we're talking about a year here. Uh, we produced what basically turned out to be the final draft. Um, and, um, what you see before you. Now, it's gone through, uh, three, as I said, uh, multiple reviews with, uh, multiple reviews with legal. Things were changed, were wording in some economization. Things were changed, were wording and some economization and, uh, collapsing so that it made it more efficient. But I, I do want to thank Jake and Jim Cooper and Anna from planning, who really had a lot to do with this. And particularly Kathleen Conley from Legal, who persevered through a number of sessions with this. I, uh, so that's the end of my presentation here. Uh, for looking for approval of this to be incorporated officially into the rules and regulations of the zoning board of appeals for Barnstable. That's it.
Jake, you're muted. Um, does anyone have any questions or, uh, discussion items on it? Or you guys feel comfortable moving it forward? I don't believe we received any correspondence or anything about it, right, Anna? There was no comments from anyone?
Correct.
No, I ju- I just would add that a, a very large number of the fifteen towns on the Cape are eager to see what we do with this because they want to hear from us. Uh, and I won't presuppose that they'll copy it, but they certainly were interested after we discussed it with them.
My only comment, it's very thoughtfully done. So thank you, Paul, and all who worked on it.
Yes.
That was going to be my comment as well. Very thoughtful in the, in the language. And I think, uh, this last, say, six to eight months, even to a year, has shown us the need for something like this to be implemented. I mean, it has absolutely gone off the tracks at times where we spend more time uh, reading the, uh, the continuances than dates than we do the actual petition. So uh, hats off to everybody involved. I think it's an excellent plan that we should move forward.
I agree.
Well, it's been, it was started in March seventeenth, twenty twenty three. So that's when Jake first authorized us to proceed.
All right. So let's make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve, um, the rules and regulations as, um, as written for withdrawals and continuances. Who's second? All right, roll call vote. Herb, vote and see.
In favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Mark Hanson?
In favor.
Denise Johnson?
In favor.
Larry Horwitz?
In favor.
Manny Alves?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So we have that approved.
It took a year.
Well done, Paul.
Congratulations. That was good.
Sticking with that for so long and following up with, with Town Legal and everyone else to make that move, keep moving forward. Um, upcoming hearings, April tenth, that one's in person, April twenty fourth, Zoom and May eighth, I believe, is in person. Uh, any other items to report, Anna?
Nope, that's it.
Wasn't a piece of correspondence on the agenda? I hate to delay us, but it's just.
Anything on there? There was a commission meeting that was canceled, I think. Was that the only thing?
Commission meeting, yeah.
Well, the temperature here is seventy-six degrees outside now, so I have to go for my evening swim.
Thanks a lot.
We're having like ten days of rain.
There was just correspondence from the planning board about a subdivision, preliminary subdivision.
That's what I remembered.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote. Herb, vote and see.
In favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Mark Hanson?
In favor.
Denise Johnson?
In favor.
Larry Horwitz?
In favor.
Manny Alves?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So we are adjourned.